Okay, I think we are a couple of minutes off already. So if everyone stands so that we can do prayer and collect the [inaudible]. Orson's going to lead us in invocation.
That's great. Gracious heavenly Father, we are blessed to be here among you today. Your presence, Lord, we feel it, Lord, and we need it. We just pray for your wisdom and discernment, Lord, in all our decisions. Lord, we pray that you would just undergird this county, Lord. Lord, that we would see your handiwork, Lord, in all that we see take place. And, Lord, we just are blessed again to be here. We praise you, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. May I pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, united in this, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll call the regular meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners to order. The first item on the agenda is to approve the amendments for the meeting on January 4th, 2017, excuse me, the special work session for January 11th, 2017, and the regular meeting on January 18th, 2017. Are there any additional corrections to the amendments besides those that you have been sending in?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of January 4th, 11th, and 18th as amended and corrected through the communications with our board of presidents.
Okay, a motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
A second. Motion by chairman.
Motion has been made in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, minutes are approved. Before I assess the agenda for the day, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, there are two. Under new business, I don't remember number eight, new business, we need to add 12. PCG, Board of Reappointments, and that is our solid waste with Clemens, Chilwell, and Gates. And number 13, the sheriffs appointment to Child Task Force. We have a new sheriff, so we need to make a appointment. Any other adjustments? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion's been made in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Okay, moving down to number four, delegation unites, there are none. And I believe we are honored today to have Battle Bats who is work at Admiral Regional Health Services and Karen Riddick.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity to stand before you this morning. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Battle Bats with Admiral Regional Health Services. Admiral Regional Health Services is celebrating 75 years of providing services to our counties in 2017. And so we plan on doing several marketing and educational opportunities throughout the year. And we certainly value our partnership with Gates County. We've been working together with you all for, working on 13 years now. Also wanted to take an opportunity to introduce Karen Riddick. She's our county nurse supervisor for Gates County. And we can't have a health director in all seven counties, so our county nurse supervisors are a vital, vital part of our organization and our structure. And we couldn't do anything without Karen and her staff there. And Karen's been with us for, working on nine years now. So certainly appreciate the opportunity to come before you this morning.
He has a resolution that he is interested for us to take action on. The resolution is for Gates County Board of Commissioners, a resolution of recognition of 75 years of public health service, whereas Admiral Regional Health Services will celebrate its 75th anniversary of service to the citizens of Pashtun, Clemens, Candor, Chilwell, Curritah, Bertie, and Gates Counties. And whereas Admiral Regional Health Services has rendered quality care to the citizens of Admiral Regional Health during its 75 years of operations. And whereas Admiral Regional Health Services is to be commended for its 75 years of outstanding service, neither or be it resolved by the Gates County Board of Commissioners that Admiral Regional Health Service be congratulated and offer the Board's serious appreciation for 75 successful years of dedicated service to the citizens of Admiral Region. And if we adopt this, it will be the sixth day of February 2017. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Madam Chairman, I make a question of the adopted resolutions recognizing the outstanding service of Admiral Regional Health Services for the past 75 years for this region.
Do I have a second?
I will second. A motion by chairman.
A motion has been made in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll sign and present you.
Madam Chairman, but just before we leave, is there a public schedule on the availability of doctors in the day of operational service that Karen can access? A website? I understand that, you know, certain days you don't have doctor there or whatever. But is there a public schedule that can be made available?
Yes, we've also posted in the Gates County Index before. We actually have several clinics. We don't necessarily have a doctor for primary care for adults, but we do our family clinic, clinic, child health clinics. We have WIC services, and it is posted in the Gates County Index.
How about a website? Do you have a website?
Yes, we have the Admiral Regional website. It's ARHS-NC.org. And it goes under all seven counties, and you pull each county up and see that website for Gates County.
So it's on the Gates County website?
It's on the ARHS, and it has all seven counties up there. And then you can pick which county you need. Yep, and that's where Admiral Regional Health Services, ARHS.
And that's dot?
Dash NC.org.
Thanks, good one.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Bats, I don't know if you'd like to mention that how are y'all working as far as on dental services provided by Admiral Regional Health Services?
We are. We have, thank you, Mr. Preman. I also want to thank you personally for your service to our Board. You're a very active member, and we appreciate your support and everything that we do there. We are working on formalizing a Northeastern North Carolina Oral Health Partnership. That group is meeting February 20th over in Chilwell County at 1:00. So anyone that's interested in coming is certainly welcome to come. But we're working with the state of North Carolina to try to really broaden the scope of services that are provided and really try to reach into our rural counties to encourage higher levels of dental services because there are, as you know, many, many, many underserved elements in our population. I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming, and I will present you with this proclamation.
Thank you.
Okay, EOS Annual Report, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. The board of directors of the Gates County EMS voted to retain his last year's contract with Gates County and no changes for this fiscal year. Since we talked to you last, we had one medic unit remanded, and it's back in service. We have a second medic unit that's almost ready to be delivered back to us, and we expect to take delivery in the next month. We have health insurance for all of the employees, full-time employees. SUV have been purchased for use, or donated for use by the chief and assistant chief. And this unit has all of the supplies that paramedic needs. And then we have a second SUV that's been purchased, and it also, and it's for the paramedic on duty. And it also has a full set of supplies in it for the paramedic. Neither one of these vehicles can transport, but because they have the paramedic equipment, they can respond directly and winter aid until an ambulance can get there. We have three personnel on duty at all times in that, two basic medical people, and one paramedic. If possible, all three of these people respond to the first call. And when they get there, if possible, the two basic EMTs transport, and the paramedic stays in the county with the car, the SUV, so that there's an immediate response to the second call from one person. This has allowed a much quicker response on the paramedic level. And in the finances area, the income from non-emergency transports has fallen dramatically. And that's because the number of dialysis patients in the county have also been reduced right now. I think we have none or one. And that's good that we don't have dialysis patients, but it does impact the income. Billing through the county began on October 1, 16, and its transition went smoothly. But as all, most transitions, there's a delay in payment, calls in the transition. And what we found was that when our income was down for at least three months by the amount of $20,000, which gave us a cash flow problem, but we were able to get by by not giving raises at the current time. The total expenses have remained constant from last year. And the way that was accomplished, we did hire a paramedic, a third person, a paramedic full-time. But we reduced, we haven't hired any part-time, very little part-time. So that was just a swap. Medicaid reimbursement won't come until June of 18. And currently, there's still some process to be done. We can't actually submit those bills. They're being held, and we submit it once all the paperwork is complete. The request to action, we request the Gates County Commissioners to petition the state legislature to add Gates County to GS 4451-4, which is attachments, garnishments, and liens for ambulance services in certain counties. There is a, this law was on the books, counties it applies to are listed there. And we believe that if we can add Gates County to the list of other counties that are already doing this, that we would be able to recoup a good portion of the $150,000 to $200,000 worth of bad debts that Gates County EMS has issued.
Could you state that law?
It's GS 4451-4. Attachments, garnishments, and lien for ambulance service in certain counties. In summary, we have, we staff at a three-personnel level on duty at all times in that. We need to have four personnel on duty at all times to meet all calls promptly. With the addition of Medicaid funds in June of 18, and an additional income from collection of bad debts that we hope to receive by being added to this law, we believe we can make the changes needed by holding the county contract pretty constant. Are there any questions?
Tom, just as a form of entry, would you comment a little bit on this donation memory of feet?
I don't have a lot of information on it. I was not, I think I know where it came from, but it has not been, it's anonymous at this time.
I wasn't asking for a name, but I mean, this said you received a vehicle, a fully outfitted vehicle?
Oh, the vehicle. I think the rest is probably outfitted, but Cecil Mattley did a service for us and was able to get these two vehicles for us. That cost a dear cost. And one of them was paid for through a donation. And the reason we had to do something is the vehicle that we were using for that purpose, it cost a fix, and it was just, it died. It wasn't prudent to fix it. We had to have something. And they also wanted a second vehicle for the chief and assistant chief. All we had was a pickup truck, it's got a lot of aisles on it. And if we put it on the road, it died, and we didn't have anything heavy to pull the equipment with that we needed to pull it. So we'll try and save the pickup truck by getting a cheaper to use vehicle.
This shows that I would rest in trust and I would greatly appreciate it, and for someone to come out and do that.
I think it was a very nice thing to do, and we certainly appreciate it. And it has made, those two vehicles have allowed us to make this switch to the three-person response, which essentially gives you, it's not a full-to-anymore response, but it gives you a much quicker response than paramedic level.
The new SUV can you transport patients in that?
No, the SUVs cannot transport patients, but they can move a paramedic to the site equipped or winter aid, and then the ambulance will come later. That's what we'd like to have a fourth person pull, so that we don't have two ambulances. So that when one was out of the county making a transport for emergency, we'd have a second. Or if we, in some cases, we've had instances where we needed three and four ambulances at the same time. And we know we can't staff up to meet the single day in a year that's busy. But the number of times that we need a two ambulance has been quite high. I don't have the exact number for it. And we feel that that's where we need to be, is a two ambulance level. And we think we can do it if we can get your support to help us with the liens and garnishments.
I noted, I hope, or I hope I wrote it down correctly, Medicare reimbursement expectation, June 2018.
That's correct. They cannot, they will not cut the check until the end of their fiscal year or the end of the year. And so you run a bill all year long, and it gets paid at the end of the year. And they, since we haven't gotten our approval, I haven't, they are, to bill anything yet, and we're well into '17, then it'll be '18 before we get that check.
So their year's gonna run like ours, beginning in June?
Correct.
But your bills are gonna be January 1, that you're gonna be reimbursed on, January 1, 2017?
I'm not, I can't tell you for sure the exact date, but we have been piling up these bills since we transferred to the county. And I think it was September. And so my belief is that we're gonna get reimbursement September.
Tom, just to clarify, going to the number, any information that was supplied to us? It says in December, there were 14 occurrences where two EMS 911 calls were going on at the same time. In 2016, there have been 99 occurrences of two simultaneous calls, 15 occurrences of three simultaneous calls, and two of four.
And we feel like you really, the county needs to be staffed at the two ambulance level. I think that number is sufficient to warrant it. What we're doing now is using overhead, the chief and assistant chief, to fill in as best we can. And because both of them are paramedics, and if they are available, you can staff four ambulances max. But if you, well, we don't have everybody on call immediately. And what we're talking about is having two, what we want to go through is two ambulances fully staffed 24 hours a day.
But as a stopgap, can't, don't we have agreements or working relationships with other counties, surrounding counties, that they'll come in if we need them? If you're out, we can call Hurtford, or Chilwell, or Clemens, or Pashtun, and they'll know that you have, you got somebody available, please come south.
Yes, and you said the important thing, if they have somebody available. They would certainly come if they are able to respond on time and manner. But they don't overstaff either. And so depending on what's going on, they may or may not be able to respond.
But we do have that kind of relationship.
Yes, sir.
And just one more question. On this general statute that you want us to support, donations and liens, it sounds like that you're billing everybody for every run that you make.
That's correct. And there are obviously people that don't pay or can't pay, and we don't expect to collect 100% of that. In discussion with other counties that have, they seem to collect 100%.
Would that, would that general statute give you the guidelines? I'm not familiar with it. I assume that you might be. Does it give you the guidelines for what you can do, or you don't develop your own guidelines?
The county would, well, the county is actually the provider, and that is billed through the county. And so the county would bill, would garnish, which is my understanding, not wages, but tax refunds. And they would also, if first people have personal or real property, real property, I think, you can place a lien on that. That's what we're talking about. It's the same type of thing. You were treated just like an unpaid county tax.
Nothing, Mr. Morgan, just a comment. When you were, I was, I've been speaking with some of your staff members as well. When you commented about dialysis patients, was that the cause they passed?
Yes.
And you expect, and you never know how many you're gonna have, but I just want to clarify for the terms of transport dialysis. Do you have any projected data on how many that might come?
We have no idea about the future. We had a period of time where we were transporting three or four, two times a week, or three times a week. And so they have stopped big time right now. And we're not transporting any, or just one. I think they said they had one coming. So, but that's not, that's non-emergency work. And we do call in people to do that, and so that's temporary workers that we're not using. Would be called in for that type of thing. As a rule, you wouldn't use a paramedic normally to transport a dialysis patient.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, any additional comments or questions? At this time, do we need to make a decision about petition? Or do we need to study?
General statute, I would actually like to see it.
Yeah.
For you to defer, and I'm sure we'd be in support, and I feel like we will be, but I want to be educated on it. For you to.
I agree. What is the time, is the time suggested? I mean, what kind of time frame are you looking for? The next 90 days, 60, you needed last week, or?
Generally, some of these, in section 9, but introduction of new resolutions or deals, there's a limit. You know, they have a date where there's a cutoff, but you can't consider additional legislation. I have not seen a date of any.
But Tom, did I understand you, that you want us to show that you qualify as a facility for what's already existing, or is it?
Nothing. The statutes, the reason it takes certain counties, my understanding, and not all counties, was that you, there are a lot of counties that have, the county provides the service. There are other counties where it's contracted, or it doesn't go through the county development process. Since we changed and are now going through the county, we are eligible to do the liens and garnishments. Where beforehand, we would not have been because we were not a government entity. The government entity was not responsible for the cost of the operation.
Mr. Preman has just pulled up that local deals have to be in by March 15th. So we do have an all need. And this would be a local deal, because what just added should be added to a, almost to an existing deal or a law. So March 15th, so we do have an all need.
Have a chance to look over that general statute between the legs.
So we will table your suggestion until we have time to study, and we'll take it up in the first March.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. In fact, a good job to do. Okay, we're moving on to administrative reports. Okay, ma'am.
This is for December 17th, 2016, through January 25th, 2017. During the reporting period, I personally handled at least 12 calls or meetings related to zoning, special use permits in maps. The planning board did not meet in January, however, the board of adjustments did meet, and they approved a variance request for Apex Towers, as well as a special use permit for Alexa Brown. Refinancing, finance, interviews were held during December, and I'm pleased to say that J.D. Hawks, who is sitting right here in the front row, accepted and began work on Wednesday, February 1st. I have been working to complete the audit and other required calendar year-end reports. As you're aware, several departments have requested new software that's more user-friendly, not just for staff, but also perhaps for the general public. And they also want the software to be integrated between departments. Five software companies will make presentations over the next few months. And today, a company that specializes in inspection software, and actually two that specialize in tax software have made presentations. And a recommendation will be included in the fiscal year 18 project. On January the 10th, Billy Wynn and I attended a hazard mitigation informational session that was related to Hurricane Matthew recovery. And based on the information provided, Gates County will not apply for the fuzz. This hazard mitigation program relates specifically to housing needs for the county. And based on the information that was presented, we did not feel like Gates County was a qualified county, even though based on FEMA definition, we did qualify. On January 11th, the meeting was held with FEMA representatives to begin the process of submitting expenses for possible reimbursement for Hurricane Matthew operations. And I'm pleased to say that Melissa Lawrence had taken on the bulk of that responsibility, and that she did submit that information last Thursday. On January the 18th, as a follow-up to the initial meeting with Mr. Chip Friedman with Little Next, the Economic Development Commission met here ideas for economic development for Gates County, and no action was taken. I was asked also to give an update about the school, qualified school construction bond. I did contact Dr. Ben Matthews, and he responded and said that he understands that we are moving forward and that they are holding the $6 million. And the Board of Education is working on the Qualified Zone Academy Bond application. Once that's complete, then it has to be brought forward, the board for the chair to sign. And what I understand, they are working on RFP for architectural services. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I will. It's personally, where are we on the plan there?
The jobs still being advertised on the personnel board today. Approve the new job description that you will receive at the March 1 meeting, or the first March meeting, I should say.
Do we have your applicants on?
We have two applications. I was waiting to see what personnel board did today, see if I want to move forward with interviewing them based on personnel board's job description.
Any additional questions or comments?
Planning Director, is that a tweet or overall?
I would say more.
More of both. Kind of both. Additional responsibilities better defined.
Yeah. Make it so they'll be working with all departments as well, with some things.
The January 10th meeting, where you had with Billy, we only have mitigation information. I spoke to you and. I spoke to you and Chairman this morning about the letter that just came out today from the governor's office about putting together a plan through a team to address not only housing and infrastructure, but infrastructure, ecosystems, and economic development. So, for the purposes of board, I think that's something that we all take, we all take a look at. We do have some washouts, and I think they're important, as we just mentioned earlier, and special one oh thirty-two, and one oh five, one fifty-eight, probably some others, but these are available funds that we could put together a plan that state addresses, and we won't have to handle it, but they'll address it, and see if we can help the county to get some fixes that we need, as well as long-range cure for those problems.
Right, and that is different than the meeting we attended, and as I, as we spoke before the meeting, Billy and I will be in a meeting this week, and we are planning on to discuss that.
Also, I think it's a good idea to bring up the rails that we talked about several months ago.
He did submit that already, and some other packets of information that he had to submit after the hurricane.
Or the Sunday area, where we had one resident was trapped.
Right, he did submit that, and something he submitted back at the end of November, or end of October, beginning of November.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on, it's nice to have you, Hawkes Quillups, and today, appreciate you, hope you enjoyed the time here. I'm sure that the rest of the staff is great, you can have someone in finance, not to take the burden off of some of our thinking as well. Max?
Good morning, and also warm welcome to Mr. Judy Hawkes, look forward to working with you. So, yeah, an opportunity to see the collector's report, got a, kind of a myriad of different things, in addition to the initial tax report you received that I'd like to add at some time.
Will be up in this first, and then we'll talk to you.
Yes, indeed. Any questions or comments? As it indicates, the good work done by all the staff, Betty, Shelley, Lori, marching ahead. You'll see that prior year percentage reference, we are, you know, had what we were this time last year in terms of collection, so I can say enough good things about that.
These funds were the drainage districts in Holly Grove, Hoppswell, Ellis Swamp. I know we have committees that oversee those funds. Since the Hurricane Matthew, I was wondering, is there, are they looking into drainage issues?
I have received probably about three calls from taxpayers wanting to know how that is, I guess, handled, and I kind of divert that to that individual in that district, whether it be Mr. Perry U or Southeast Drainage. Either their ditches may be full, or something with the runoff, you know, maybe some understanding for them. And how that is broken down is by district, that parcel in and of itself gets allocated, usually based on acreage size. If there's a split from that, then that's a new parcel issued, new drainage, and so forth, as has always been the case in our case.
I've just had several calls concerning drainage, as you might expect, since Matthew is on the world.
Yes, ma'am.
Go anywhere.
And I try to divert them to those, you know, kind of responsible parts, if you will, not really adept on answering any questions regarding scheduling, or a location of any projects, if you will, for the drainage. So, I kind of, I've been diverting those to different staff.
Just one other question, on the, if you look at the bottom of the collector's report, it says funds collected through D M D County?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
All right, if you go to the top of the reports, it says total collected on motor vehicles, eleven. What's, one is forty-three thousand five sixty-seven, other is three sixty-eight. I was thinking that would be together, but what is the difference?
There is a distinction based on the town and the county. What is referenced for the county and collected via the town, those vehicles, you know, associated with the town council.
Well, whatever my point is.
We get money, we get money from the D M D, when they pay at the D M D. The other figure is what we plan in our office on old deals.
Okay.
There's lingering prior to two thousand thirteen, thank you, Ms. Texas.
I don't love it all together.
Yeah, there's still a few, as of what, last billing event was in thirteen, that all counties in the state actually billed, so we, oddly enough, there's some of the delinquent money, or, you know, some of those old M V C bills, so we try to get creative on how to collect some of that, and I think we've done an earnest effort trying to get some of those old, you know, that money off the books, so to speak.
Okay, well, thank you for your recording, any other comments or questions?
Chairman, I'd just like to state what was collected for the month, just for the audience and for the camera. Total tax collections for the month were one million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents.
If we also collect through year-to-date, right at five point nine million.
Okay, now, you have the revalue.
You do, you did receive that overall spreadsheet reflecting the numbers, look at a breakdown for, for the new portrait that we're, we're gonna see for this year within terms of value. They kind of, they break it down with land and buildings, the defer. Most critical to what, you know, is of issue as we get to budget time is that taxable value figure, because we, you know, we have to account for those parcels receiving deferment within the county with that present use. So, that line, the second column, if you will, or a portion taxable figures, is where we're headed, at that overall percentage decrease, as we anticipated. We're right where we thought we would be, there really are no surprises, you know, when we started out the, the rebau project, we're right at that ten percent under. I mean, I think that was realistic going in, and oddly enough, that's where, that's where we've ended up with the decrease in value for the county. We did gain, or, I won't say gain, in terms of that deferred value, we, we actually gained some, if you will. Previous reappraisal, we had two hundred, over two hundred and thirteen million, going through rebau, you know, we've got like a hundred and eighty-five. Some of that is the solar farm with those parcels involved with, they kind of lost that P U V value, which they were, a portion of it is that, and a portion of it is for those, we got a little bit of poultry activity in the county, that those parcels, as of yet, don't qualify for P U V value, so there's a waiting period, but in any case, we did gain, if we use that term, a bit with that. So, that was just a snapshot. I did, as I kind of reach out to also some of the town folks, too, in terms of those representatives with the town, to make some contact, to say, you know, this is where we're gonna be budgeting here, maybe, you know, this is, this is what we need to be addressing, and moving forward.
I just want to note a mention, you know, in South Chelmsford, possibly we decreased nearly ten percent, or nine point six four percent, exact on taxable figures, and that decrease means that the current tax rate will not generate the same amount of money as it did before, but even if we had to increase taxes because the overall value is less, the tax bills would not be anymore. In other words, whereas we're paying sixty-eight cents now, and we had to add three cents and make it seventy-one, if your last year's tax bill was, was two thousand dollars, it would still be two thousand dollars, add, add seventy-one cents, as it would at sixty-eight cents. So, but.
That would be revenue neutral.
Yeah, it would still be neutral, but the thing about it is, sometimes we have to revalue, if we say we increase taxes to keep revenue neutral, it doesn't mean that it's gonna increase tax bills, it's only gonna increase the amount of tax to get the same amount of money that we had before.
That's right, yes, sir, based on that new valuation, that's, that's correct, sir. I hope that is helpful, that overall snapshot of that spreadsheet.
Okay, I'm going to.
Yes, ma'am, we have some refunds there, thirteen totaled regarding they were received from lender institutions there. The Core Lodge at Little Fargo.
Okay, and this is just where two people are paid, the, the balance is paid, or the loaner, I mean, the person holding the loan, and either tax payer, or a law firm.
That's right, yes, ma'am, that's correct, and you're all kind of, in that realm, we kind of see this almost every year, particularly when we get a large lender file, because, you know, Lori may get in a large, a hundred and eighty thousand dollar check, and in that, or multiple parcels, there's really no way to separate a refund out, you know, and it might have to kind of be applied, and then a refund is generated, yes, ma'am. So, I kind of lumped them in, as we have them there, all, twelve of them in reference.
Core Lodge is like a clearinghouse.
Yes, like a handling institution, if you will, like a, a service, a tax service, if you will, they might, might do some for, I'll say, P and C Bank, or whatever that institution is, that'll send a mass check, mass mailing of payments, yes.
Chairman, I would suggest polling the board, you know, we've got good advance information. I looked it over, and if they've done their homework, I would ask that you poll the boards, if you wanna do all these at one time? If it's agreed?
Is everybody agreed that we do them all at once, all at once? Do I entertain a motion?
Chairman, I would make a motion that we vote on these refunds from the tax corporate force, together, all in one vote. The total amount of all of them would be nine thousand, three hundred and six dollars and five cents.
Motion, Mr. May, do I hear a second?
Sure.
Motion, Mr. May, any discussion? Hearing none? This involves money, I think I raise the hand, all those in favor say, I raise the right hand? All those vote, okay. Thank you.
Right, I did want to say on the rebau figures, now, keep in mind, that, that does not include any appeal, valuation information. When we start sending out those, no just of new assessment, we anticipate three percent on the average, or less, of people coming in, and either bringing a fee appraisal, or, you know, looking at the evaluation. So, we typically, we see these numbers, but keep in mind, that, that does not include any appeals, or any adjustments that are made, once those appeals start.
Ms. May, but previously, when we were talking about revaluation in the, in the past, were most of the counties around eighteen percent?
Oh, yes, in Chawan, we're about a little over thirteen in terms of loss and value. The reappraisal from Pasco Bank was a little over nineteen percent of loss and value, of course, with all that waterfront dominating some activity there, so. As a whole, most of the northeast, and, you know, from those counties involved, Duplin, Terrell, a lot of them, we're all seeing from where we were eight years ago with the loss and value. You know, we feel that the ten to thirteen is only the average of what most counties went through, some of these ones populated with waterfront saw more significant, obviously, you know, loss of value, but, but we're right on that cusp, I think, of what the average is, yes, sir.
I have one other issue that I can provide amongst all this made I have here.
You want to take a reset?
Five-minute break?
We got information on one of our four close properties, I didn't call it the first name, but it's a really property, and I looked at that, I have a chart somewhere, but I saw it, where it's on Baymore Lane, it goes back in the lane, property sits back, I think we got it evaluated somewhere close to twenty thousand dollars. But it's off-road, it looks like the county, I don't know if we're gonna address it or not, but it looks like the county's gonna have to absorb the taxes. It seems like that it should be some provisions where we could offer that to a neighboring property owner. Somehow we could get rid of that property, because if we take it in, I mean, it's, it's not sellable, I mean, it sits back, it's nowhere, and you've got property owners around it, you know, there should, I'm thinking there should be some leeway where we can negotiate and, and the surrounding property owners, there's so much to be able to take that property off our hands. We put it up foreclosed, we didn't sell it, so now we need to get rid of it.
That is true, and oddly enough, that is one of the, I had on that ticker tape of I M C, the unpaid deal, because that D four, you know, recording is in the tax office, the law firms, Akieus has already issued that check for the recording fees, however, that, that needs to be recorded. Oddly enough, I have received about three phone calls regarding the property, some people were interested. The only issue is being such a small, limited amount of acreage, it's unbuiltable by the county standards, at a half acre. Another unfortunate thing is those contiguous parcels in that area, unfortunately, have some bit of delinquency already, so that is of issue with unpaid taxes for some of those surrounding parcels. So, one, you know, immediately close by is not delinquent, I'll say, but the ones immediately around it is very unique, they all, you know, have, have some delinquency that is of issue. But on the unrelated, I did receive a phone call from a young lady that was interested in what that process would be of acquiring it, however, that limitation remains, you know, it's unbuiltable, it's, it's under that acre minimum requirement in the county. Not to mention, I have concerns, I don't even know if it, it might not even perk, but that's neither here nor there, I can't, I mean, it was very low, unfortunately, in all of it, but.
When I looked at it, it sounded like, what Tom Morgan was going now, but it sounded like it's grown up, that it may be rid of there, but, you know, it's almost, it could be a semi-investment, you know, you leave someone to go in and, and cut the wood, the timber in there, and probably get back, you know, what they put into it. But I just think we need to take a look at the general statutes and see what kind of limits we can give to you to negotiate in getting rid of those properties, instead of the county collecting promises, and just having bits and pieces scattered all over the county like that. I mean, if we get, we get a hundred dollars out of it, we, we made out, I mean, it's a half, it's a half acre lot. I thought it was one acre, but maybe it's a half acre, and we just need to, we don't need to just collect land like that.
Oh, I agree, and that's all the point of, kind of being more of, kind of certain of those properties you foreclose on, I mean, if you, you know, just roll the dice and send them all, we, of course, I don't want to say you get fortunate and you might collect some of that revenue, because that letterhead has gone out with the attorney's, you know, name on it, and it strikes more interest, so it does offer consideration, too. Some of these properties are maybe less desirable, they're in a location, and they're, you know, not really at that ideal, you know, development, if you will, so.
Am I understanding, you should say that we need to be particular and selective in what we send off to an attorney, or?
I think, I think so, in the final analysis, you know, if, if you can just take a second look, and we have, Lori and I have sent three batches in our tenure here, since we've been here in a little over two years, of assignments. Of those settled, some of the ones that have gone quickly, or settled quickly, or those properties that are, are marketable, if you will, some of the others have lingered on, they might be a difficult title search, or they might be in an area where, you know, small acreage and things of that nature, but I think we take a second look and break through before we just, you know, just because it's delinquent, and we've certainly done that, we've been, you know, more a student, and try to take a look. Although, the other theory is, if, if you don't send it, you never know, you, you might have some activity, as was the case with the, oddly enough, another property here in the county, where there was considerable delinquency, and, and guess what? and, and guess what, when that activity started out, and, um, some postage of that property and things of that nature, within almost, uh, three hours, we, our, our office was inundated with phone calls. And so, you know, what is to say, you know, what, what would be the, the policy, but, and that's another case of, of years of, of delinquency, and, and within, like I said, less than three hours, and, and everybody was, was dialing the office. So, we, uh, once again, we, we had some good luck with that, so.
And how, those callers, how, how did they get the knowledge?
Uh, seeing the signs initially, yes, uh-huh, and then the website, of course, Zaccheaus Leaking Services, that website they use, um, it's quite helpful. They post all their clients, both for Gates and Craven, um, and some activity with that as well, they, they can see it online, view that property, so.
And this may, uh, for purpose of board and analysis, uh, our current requirement that we've implemented on ourselves is that after two years of delinquency, the property can go into foreclosure.
That is correct, yes.
So, basically what you're saying is that maybe we need to tweak that, give some leniency, if it's not marketable, maybe that two-year should be extended or relaxed somewhat, to try to give more, try to time to collect some.
Well, well, maybe not relaxed, but maybe in the case where we are more diligent about looking at those properties, cause we, we don't want the county inundated with a barrage of property that for the most part is unsellable. That, that doesn't generate revenue, of course, you don't get the revenue anyway because of tax bills unpaid. But at the same time, I, I think that is, I mean, you know, we're, that two-year window, uh, I think, I, I think in the past, there was some conversation about going to the, the one-year portion, but within that, that two years, we, you know, we're still, uh, have those accumulated accounts, and we, we know which ones they are, and we try and target. Lori and I made trips out and tapped on a few doors, that's, uh, excited a little bit of response, uh, and whatnot. But I think that policy is very good, it, it works for us, but some of the properties, we, we may want to just investigate and, and see for sure. What we're, what does that, that characteristic of that property in overall, you know, you take a second look at that.
Well, certainly it's from our reports that we have received, you are collecting on some of these, uh, properties that have been dormant for a long time.
Uh, we have, yes ma'am, I'm sure I have.
And it's for?
Yeah, yes I do.
And always that all those parcels that are challenging?
Right, that is true, yes ma'am. So, regarding that, that statement of taxes, uh, with, with the one in the county is due to be transferred to the county. Is, is that a motion, or is that an agreement that the board, uh, with the unpaid tax, we may have gotten a copy of that, so over thirteen hundred dollars or so, or in an email or so?
On January the thirtieth?
Yeah.
What would that be?
The statement the taxes due was emailed on January the thirtieth.
In the amount of one thousand three hundred and three dollars and sixteen cent for the rented property there on Baymore.
Someone to come forward?
No, no, that is what the county owes, that is what is due by the county to the tax department.
Yeah, then they, uh, with Mark Bardell, with his visit, uh, January, he, he has, uh, kind of authored that deed. Uh, you know, he's got a check for that recording fee, but the unpaid taxes, uh, amount is of, of issue.
Yeah, and, and once we pay that, that property belongs to the county?
It, uh, yes sir, mm-hmm.
Madam Chairman, I, I would certainly like to make a motion that we move forward, but also in that motion I would want to have our, uh, county tax administrator look at the, uh, general statute to see if, uh, what leniency the county has in, uh, selling that property at its discretion. Whatever cost pays to get rid of it, uh, to try to recoup those funds we're, uh, having our citizens to pay.
This is like, when it goes to the forelives, they want to be sold, uh, and is it, by general statute, does it have to? Now, you have to make up, I mean, they'd have to pay the lengthy taxes to get a clear cost, correct?
That is correct, and this was the case with the other property sold back in October. Now, the county in essence became the high bidder, if you will, back in October, when new, new interest was, was presented, yes ma'am, at that same.
By default, it comes back to us?
Yes ma'am.
Well, if you understand my mo, my motion is that you move forward, but just wanna look at the ways that you can, uh, still get rid of the property and not be tied to, you know, we can't get thirteen hundred dollars for it, if you don't get it before then, it's better than not.
Mm-hmm, yes sir.
I think we went ahead and checked, uh, the general statutes, so.
Yes ma'am, verified, what was the question?
You can, excuse me, you can sell it because I found deeds in our, um, where did you do it? No, um, take deposit box, the property that the county no longer own, that it had, it had acquired through foreclosure, and similar to this situation, and within three to six months, they had already sold that property to individuals in the county.
Oh, was it?
That was true. Back, not county, general managers, back two managers ago, so it's like two thousand and ten or so?
It was in our line, okay.
But that would be my motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, you heard, uh, Commissioner Jordan's motion, um, concerning this piece of property and to, and also looking to what, uh, options are. Do I have a second?
I second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion to the property, second, any discussion? And then Commissioner Jordan, I believe you said, we can contact the attorney, our county attorney, as well as looking at the general statutes.
Sure, yes, that's, you're part of it, well.
Hearing no comments, questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we'll look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Yes, very good, um, and one final thing, as we get into, uh, the month of March, we speak of delinquent taxes. I'll need a motion from the board, uh, in years past, we have advertised all ten years. Um, if the board is so choosing, um, we can continue that, or we can just advertise for the delinquent year. Uh, right now, I would say we've got a little over, over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of unpaid two thousand and sixteen real estate bills. Uh, that's in addition to some, uh, other delinquency yet to be advertised as we approach the mark. Uh, we have March first from June to advertising the paper as, as we did last year. I think we hit about the third week of March, we have those, uh, insert provided in the Gates County Index. But I'll, I'll need a motion, what would be the board's preference of advertising?
And of course, you had to take, have time to put it together, as well.
Oh, yes ma'am, and to get the flat file.
Why is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we advertise related taxes for up through, past ten years.
Second.
Okay, my motion has been made, and second that we put up, should it get same index, the list of delinquent tax, um, payers, uh, going back ten years. Um, motion's been made, and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay, carries, and we, you can do it, I can march first.
Oh, yes ma'am, all right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going down the list, um, any departmental reports? Uh, Mr. Headcap, I see you're in here, um, I, Mr. Green, go forward, um, the ID, did you, y'all have a, a demo?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, we've got it.
I've, I've spoken with the contractor, um, I have spoken with the contractor, and he's gonna fix that at a cost to us, so it's just, it's getting us scared, I'm, I'm holding to his work.
What, what area?
It's the house that was made for assisted living facility.
That we've had while before?
That's right.
Quite a while, so there was one picture?
Yes, I've also the board job on thirty-two, as well as one fifty-eight, that will be scheduled at some point in April. Um, I know that's a little ways out, but it's taken so long to get everything set up and scheduled, they've got other work scheduled out in the label.
All right, what, what about the, uh, state's part of that fix? Do you have any ideas of the, they're gonna start, as far as the watch out, area around?
To my knowledge, the state has completed what they're gonna do, they've completed to the bottom of the ditch floor.
They've already fixed it?
Yes.
They, they have fixed the shoulder portion, rolling out through the bed of the ditch.
Uh, I don't know if you were here when we speak with the county manager, but, uh, the governor's office has asked a request for us to together a plan for addressing certain infrastructure issues that we could submit to him, and the county manager probably will talk to you about that, uh, you and Billy, so. And maybe we can address those areas, also got an area on one fifty-eight by the hospital that's washed out, all that's infrastructure, and, uh, so, maybe we'll get some help there, that.
Thank you, I'm glad we're getting that, it's just, well, I mean, I, I.
Oh, and another thing, um, the replacement of pump one and two, the front three, um, soon as they can get a contract, I've got other big additions, so that's all the documentation, so we can go ahead and get a contract and get a start date on that as well.
And you are just work on three, four, or did I read that, just read that?
There's been several little jobs done, maintenance and other, but, uh, the major pump replacements, those pumps have not come in, they've been.
Order. I'm going, pump one, two replacement, and you're re, rebuilding or rebuild three and four?
That, that, that will be.
Where, could you tell me, pump one and two, where the?
That's the south side of the county, um, it's kind of an imaginary line that's six acres through and splits the county. Page to the water tower, four to a thousand gallon tower, provides the northern portion of the county, and then the two hundred and fifty thou, two hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank, Sunbury and Gates supply the southern part of the county.
So, it's those that you're replacing, the Sunbury and Gates?
Yeah, the pumps that supply those, and then just, that's the motor, and everything, I'm updating that, that's original materials and infrastructure from nineteen seventy-eight, um, and the company that, that produced those pumps have been bought out, and I'm having a hard time getting durability out of the, their equipment and their drive units. So I'm gonna upgrade to a new style system like pump three and four, so our complete water system will be, all four pumps will be the exact same manufacturer make, manning parts in one location.
Can I keep your inventory, please, here by inventory?
That's correct, everything with pumps matched.
And they're inexpensive?
They what?
Very inexpensive, the pumps.
He's being facetious.
Uh, not as bad as I was expecting, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thanks sir.
Yeah.
And thank you. Okay, um, I believe that finishes the administrative reports, unless one of the department heads has, uh, can, yes, sure. Always nice to see you.
She's afraid you're gonna stop at my daddy's house, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I remember this is my room, it's in the, whatever, but I just wanted to take this time to let the county know and the commissioners that my guys are working hard, Brandon, would you come forward? Um, in December, there was a class of guys that went before World Cup, the government, and probably I couldn't make it. I said one of Brandon's best friends with him. Brandon has completed over nine hundred, almost one thousand hours of extra classroom, this is not state mandated, this is not state required, in-service training by sheriffs. Education and training standards, these are just classes and continuing education that Brandon thought that he would go and take care of. And with that, I just want to present in front of you guys, the highest form of police or sheriff's certificate that you can accomplish. Brandon has accomplished his advanced law enforcement certificate, signed by the governor, the chairman, and the insurance standards division, and every com, member of the service association board. So with that, I'd like to present in front of the commissioners, Brandon Hawkes, advanced law enforcement certificate, the highest law enforcement certificate that you can accomplish in service in his law enforcement career. Thank you, Brandon, so much.
Brandon, speaking on behalf of the board, we certainly appreciate your service to the county and your dedication to your job, and we're well educated, always are better with public service.
Thank you.
Okay, no public hearings today, we do have update, um, the historic forelives.
As you can see, we received this on Friday, um, on Zell River and Clear Skates. And he included prices and, and his recommendations as to how to repair or renovate or rebuild, whatever he decides to do for the West Wing.
I know we received this on Friday, and I certainly, um, you know, I mean, I've tried, I've tried to study this. Unfortunately, did not call a couple people I wanted to call about some comments, I mean, some things that were written in here, um, about replacements and, uh, all some of the options that were prior. Certainly something, and I was a little surprised, uh, it was not as bad as I thought it was. Maybe I was wrong, okay, what do we, any comments?
One complaint I had on here is, at the, for a bullet there, sourcing a reclaimed brick, I thought we were looking at, uh, new stress brick.
I have, it's, I have told him that several times, and I know that our village inspector has said, his code book says you cannot use reclaimed brick. Uh, but every time I've spoken with Clear Skates, they always mention reclaimed brick, reclaimed brick. I have told them, that's not what the board wants.
I think we need to tell again, yes.
Now, Bill, you said using new brick, right, is what you said? Yeah, that, I thought that was, well, I don't know what we've sent down to them, I know the, the recent conversations I've had with Natalie in the top, and I believe I shared with you guys too, but that's what, uh, I thought we were talking about.
And their definition of reclaimed brick, they can sit for what we found, I don't know.
Yes, the new thing, the quantity, then, it wasn't really that many, did I call that?
I think that was, you know, the quantity was, uh,
Insufficient, I think.
Insufficient, at some, at some of the places, but then they went to some new, something that had been stayed out on a yard for a long period of time, and it went through freeze and thaw cycles that were kind of new brick, but had been out there for a while.
Is it yardage?
Yeah. It was new brick, I mean, it had been used, but it just stayed on the yard.
Right, they call it yardage, and they want it to be five years old.
Yeah, I, I look at it, and, uh, you know, the cost of, of restoration is less than the cost of reconstruction. And, uh, I recognize that Mr. Feldman has pointed out that, uh, this reclaimed brick is not what we, uh, we talk about. But if we can give a definition of what reclaimed is, if it's, if it is new in fact, uh,
I don't know.
I think we should go forward with the, uh, with the restoration, uh, rather than reconstruction. I think that's what they're looking for now, which direction it goes in.
Reclaimed brick, I believe, based on discussions we've had, is new brick.
Well, now, you know, if you go to places like Williamsburg and Eden, they fix homes, or they have brick that, uh, that is to the characteristics of the white stuff layer, so is that new brick, or is that reclaimed brick?
Like I said, based on discussions from what I understood, it is old brick, that was. Like I said, based on discussions from what I understood, it is old brick that was salvaged and is being reused. And that is the understanding that I received when I spoke with our building inspector.
Well, you built a building inspector, you can't use that.
That is what he said state code says.
And that's what we did with John Zellinger.
I have sent that in an email to him. But you'll notice that also if they can find reclaimed brick, the cost is substantially more than new brick.
Yeah, because it's number five on the community with restoration five, it costs new brick.
Yeah, it's a little, I wouldn't think it's impressive at home for some reason. Um, but right there in next to the last paragraph, first line, which says the factors above. I mean, I see, I realize it's the lower number, but I see extensive word, extensive replacement, inherent inefficiencies, and working with specialists. Seems like maybe that would drive up the cost. But yet the second one is the higher number. And, and it says that it's in there that it's saving the roof, right? Our opinion of cost presumes the saving of the roof structure. Didn't say anything about saving the roof structure, the first one. I guess they just assumed that.
Well, I think it's, it's, it's that the roof was state sane and they would carry everything on the west wing from that, from the roof to the grain. Where the restoration is, there would be some of the remaining wall, I mean, some walls. You wouldn't be carrying out everything. Of course, with, you know, restoration, you never know what problems you're gonna run into.
And it says, it does say probable cost. And, um, you know, in the, uh, the one that I was referring to where it says the factors above, because it says probable cost, the high line there does get to past the bottom of the reconstruction.
And they said, and one of the things is that, you know, that statement, standard construction techniques would provide a greater range of sub punch practices to participate. If it's restoration, there is a much smaller group to choose from. But we are fortunate that we're close to Williamsburg and we are close to Eden. There are a lot of people who have special skills that work in those two areas.
The difference in the range, eighty-five thousand dollars in the first one, sixty-one thousand dollar range inside. I know we want to get started. Are we, are we ready?
What about, uh,
Decision-wise?
What about our line item for this?
You do not have the, all of this money here would have to be a budget amendment?
Well, I'm seeing here on page seventeen to twenty-seven of your financial report, these kind of expenditure statements. For the old courthouse restoration, we appropriated five hundred, five thousand dollars. Activity in this period, seven thousand dollars would be expended, seven, three hundred, seven hundred thousand. And we have a balance, an undercompared balance of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. Which is what we've got now. And we're possibly going from restoration to two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So we're looking at about a hundred and twelve thousand dollar shortfall. Of course, we never asked for donations or, uh, I think you did say, uh, some of that, the historic society was gonna make a donation at West Wing.
I can't speak for the entire society, but I think that we will, I know that we will do the, the fadure room is on the west wing and I know that we will take all that responsibility of the, um, the interior back, fixing that up too. Um, because we had money designated for that room. So we'll, that will be the interior of that for the, I would think, of some of the historical society. But I cannot speak for the whole society, but I know we have a, money was donated for that, for the fadure.
All right, meaning that-
So that took some of the cost off, I would think.
Being that we have a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars appropriated or left, can we, uh, this is a finance question there. Can we actually move forward with authorizing rules over that, testing the?
No, you need to address the short term first.
So it looks like we need to see where we're gonna get those funds, uh.
I wonder what, I can interject, I wonder what the difference, I'm sure we won't have this answered, so it's just a comment. The difference between the brick and the cost there. I think it's gonna be a big number?
It's not, it's on here, it's on here. New brick is twenty-six, twenty-seven cents per brick.
So we're talking, uh, what, eight, eight thousand?
Yeah, well, we don't-
There's sixty-five cents on the other wing. Thirty, thirty-nine cents.
Now, if we have to announce this is gonna be covered with shotguns?
Twenty-two, so it's twenty-two thousand dollars difference in brick. I realized it was in that document. And, and that's one of the reasons I was in favor of using new brick, because you never gonna see it. Be covered.
You know, the, the housing committee, I mean, the old courthouse committee has not met probably in two years.
It's never met since I've been here and I don't know if it met when John Lindepah was here.
We did when John was here.
One of the things that we were looking at was the fact that we would go, through the citizens, the public, uh, to see if anyone was interested in being a part of the restoration, knowing, you know, we've never put together any type of, uh, information to solicit that interest. I think, you know, really we should, we should, we know what it's gonna cost now. We've got a plan in place. And if you use that to present that information and, uh, you know, with about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in shortfall, you know, who knows? We can get seventy-five percent of that.
There was a letter drafted in July two thousand fifteen that the board did not move forward with at that time because we were at a standstill with project.
But we still have the draft in the line up.
Yes, I just pulled it up.
And that was to go where to do the favors and-
To whoever the board decided that needed to be sent to. And then, of course, who was gonna be responsible for sending it, who was going to sign the letter. At that time, the recommendation was for the chair and vice chair and then this Ian Siling, of the commissioners, and then Ian Siling, with the historical society to sign.
I would, I would like to see the, uh, county manager put the other information for our, our next meeting, for us to look at on ways to generate the shortfall through the compensation, uh, any other funds that you may have been able to come up with. And, uh, have that on our agenda for our next meeting and that. Clearscapes know that we're looking at ways to move forward. I think the new brick is the preferred, uh, type of material that's to be used. And, uh, and just addressed that at our next meeting. I don't think there are the time constraints where they have to have to know before they at least give us a chance to see how we're gonna raise those funds.
So you want the letter which is already drafted?
Copy of that there.
And then the only other option at this point in time is money to come from fund balance. There are no, um, grants because I know Ms. Hopler has checked. And there's one that, that based on discussions with Ree Thomas in the past, it would be best to replace the windows in the building using that grant money if it's available. But as far as restoration of buildings, there is no money available, many grants that I have found recently.
Oh, what, and I have neither, but I do think we would be, this is spalling or spilling things to redo the, um, windows of the courthouse that we can get a grant for or I think historical society probably could get a grant for because they are in bad shape and that as this restoration process is going on to do those. Um, I will, I know Ree Thomas is gonna be here in March to talk to the historical society. Uh, but, um, I will call a meeting of, um, executive committee of the historical society and see and present them, see what they will say. I can't speak for them, but if they would like to make a donation, donation. And I will have that information back to you by the first of March.
And, uh, like I said, we do have a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars residual, uh, based on this, because a hundred and twelve.
But I do know that we do have, as I've stated before, money designated for the upper room of the west wing with fadure stuff. And so that money will certainly go via, I mean, by doing the interior. So that would help cut the cost, I would think, of the, uh, this.
What is that figure amount, Cheryl? Can you recall? And if you don't, I suppose.
I don't, because we did spend some monies, um, for cabinet work to be done and that was done by the Museum of the Alcoral and we had HVAC and heat because it had been emitting. So some money was spent, the original donation was a hundred bucks.
I, uh, I-
I don't, I don't know how much of that's left.
Just, just as food for thought and if you'll remind me, I've been texting with Dad's granddaughter, Regal, and she's, uh, she may be willing to, to make sure that, um.
Maybe they could do a fundraiser for Agnes, Agnes Ford.
That's where it's possible. Did Ree Thomas visit in March? That's official, not meeting?
Yes, it's official, not meeting.
And I say officially because of Dad.
Well, I'm gonna because of Dad. But we'll try, um, and I do.
Commissioner Feldman just pointed out something to me that if we're gonna use reclaimed brick, that two hundred and thirty-seven thousand may be much less than that. It could be somewhere between a hundred and fifty, a hundred and six, fifty-two to maybe a hundred and seventy, whatever new brick. Right, so we could be looking at fifty thousand dollar shortfall or somewhere around that area. But, uh, nevertheless, we still leave that thing open.
Well, you still have to, even once you fix the walls, you still have to rewire the entire wing. You have to put the, uh, people have to put the floor back in. So there's still additional work that would have to be done inside that wing other than just putting the bricks back up.
So if we could get the, uh, exterior done and then we can, and people see that and think that that would be advantageous to get, get, uh, get donations as well.
County manager, you have that for us in our package, so we can track.
And I'll see what I can find from the historical society.
So he's a message, uh, to Cheryl and to Clearscapes is that we're looking at how to move forward and should we give them an answer?
In March. And we had to talk to James Andrews.
Like I said, we received this on Friday.
So if you could make contact and see what this is. I also have one too.
Well, they, they did this with James, because this is how they had received the, probably that's-
Okay, uh, moving forward to, uh, new business, uh, GITS. I know she's fallen asleep that way. Once again, every time I think you have done, uh, you send us more papers to read.
You're still excited when I see you.
I know. I am so excited when I see you all the time. Because I know I'm gonna have a book to read.
I know, I, um, well, if we start with these, um, policies came from the compliance review. Um, the first one, I guess we start with the smallest one, I don't know if you're familiar with it, which is the, the one from the, part of the safety program plan. And the, the difference, the change there was in responsibility. Um, originally, we had, um, the administrator assistant and myself down as the safety officer. They wanted a more clear view, um, so that's why it states that she would be the safety officer, but I am the account, the accountable executive, I guess, or whatever. Um, so she would be named as the safety officer. She's gone through the training for the safety officer and I'll be responsible for making sure that she does what the state she needs to do. So that's the, um, that was the only change in the safety plan that was required.
Now, do we need to take a separate bill on that or?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I know all of you stated the, um, GITS system safety program plan, the twenty-seventeen update. She gave us the changes, uh, in a change motion concerning that.
So that's what I have, the sixth, the one page. You're fine. All right, second.
Motion to be made, probably second in discussion. Here are none, all those in favor, say aye. Okay, nine. The cash handling.
The cash handling policy, um, we have had generally two people available when they have money with county, but the plan did not say that two people would be present at all times. And then to add the portion of after hours, after hours, um, they lock the money up in my office, but most of the time it's only one person. But it could be multiple people, so they said that we had to have a locked box for that to, to be put in. So that's the change there, that two people will be present anytime money is counted. And, um, in addition, when the office is closed, that it will be, um, dropped in a locked box. It's will be in my office.
And if you're looking, that's the last page of the GITS documents, is the page before the surplus request.
What page is that?
Uh, I don't know what page is it, I'm not, uh, to be honest, I'm not following along because I know what it is. Because I had that up. Patrice revealed. It's, uh, page forty, I think it's page forty. After, after page forty-two, there's a number of page forty-two at the bottom. It's that page right there that you have in front of you, Mr. Jordan.
Cash policy, there's no number.
Number.
But is that the board, forty-two?
Section twenty-one, install.
Keep going.
Got it.
Very good.
And do you have a locked box, drop box?
Um, Crystal and I are working with getting that installed. Yeah.
I didn't take the paper, that's why I was asking.
Well, we have a locked box, but they want it to be-
So you can get to it at nine?
Yeah.
Uh, Cheryl, I think the motion that, uh, that he proposed new, new cash handling policy, uh, with the lock box, uh, authorized into, uh, GITS policy procedure.
Second.
Motion is committed, second, in a discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, now your title six plan.
Title six plan, um, we created the title six plan back in January of two thousand and fifteen, but the federal transit administration has added some different parts or whatever, so they kind of gave us a different format for it, so that's what you see here. And, um, the, the title six plan is what we use to, I guess, state that we do not discriminate on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, age, and disability. So it's a relative linky plan, they require us to put in, um, the different tables from the census bureau. All of this is, let's let me read it.
Questions now?
I have memorized.
Okay, I'll call you when I need to park.
Page forty, I think is what I remember.
Any, uh, do I enter or is the motion to approve the plan?
Sure.
Pops six.
Second.
Motion's been made, a second, in a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And thank you for the job you do. Taking up on this paper for is...
Thank you.
Okay, going to budget amendments.
Surplus.
Okay, surplus, excuse me.
There's two vehicles in the charismus to be surplus. Copy that you have does not have my recommendation, but it is sell as is, reserved, basically for scrap parts. And then you have the other information that's provided with it.
There'll be a dot, go.
There'll be, go, go deals, yes, sir.
And we're talking about two thousand one, four, twenty-fifth, and two thousand and nine. Okay, you see the request for surplus, disposition of assets, got a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move that we take the recommendation of these, sort of these assets to go deals.
Sorry.
Motion's been made, a second, in a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Sheriff got two vehicles. Get rid of them. Okay, yeah, Sheriff's request, Office budget request.
This is, Sheriff already has money in his vehicle lot item. He would like to purchase another, but he does need additional funding. So this is to move money from the miscellaneous and emergency fund for the commissioners. There was a vehicle that was sold that had belonged to the sheriff's office earlier this year, and the amount of five hundred sixty dollars, thirty dollars of it went to pay the fees for go deal, which left the remainder of five hundred and thirty that was put miscellaneous and emergency to transfer that, and the money out of the unemployment insurance lot item for the sheriff's office into the Capitol House vehicle.
So making a change to give him an additional two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you've heard that the budget amendment is proposed to give Sheriff enough money to, along with all the funds that he has, to purchase a null vehicle? Or is the pleasure for...
The Capitol House is what he already has.
He already, no, sir, that's moving it into that lot item. He already has money in that lot item. This is to increase that lot item by two thousand four hundred and three dollars, by moving it from these other two lots.
Miscellaneous emergency and unemployment.
Right.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made, a second, in a discussion.
No discussion, but do we, do we have to use go deals for your surplus property, or is that...
You have to outline what you would like to do before you vote on it, because of the way it's outlined in our current policy. So if you wanted it to go to a recycling center, that could be the recommendation that's on that paper.
Or so, otherwise?
You can't do it, if you do an individual sale, you have to do like we did with the property that was done earlier this year.
And have free bids.
You'd have to advertise, upset bid, that sort of thing.
Okay, let's, this is, this is a budget amendment. We could, like that, we play it up, Commissioner, free then.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
So the budget is to, budget amendment to increase the lot item, Capitol House vehicle to two thousand four hundred and three dollars. Motion's been made, property second, in additional discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we have a Sheriff Hathaway. You have a null item.
Yes. Yes, yes. There was a concern when I first got sworn in in September, I knew that there was numerous vests that were outdated. These vests are bulletproof vests, it's the concealment type, it goes underneath the uniform. These are one daily, by patrol deputies on duty. But Sheriff like on these vests are only five years. I checked my guys, and the newest vest I had is from two thousand and nine. That means that they were expired in two thousand fourteen. I plead with you, Commissioners, that you consider this, because in the event that something happens, and these vests, the cap bar side that stops the bullet or slows the penetration of the bullet, starts to depreciate or degrade, that's what concerns me about these vests. So with that, I don't have the money in my budget to get these vests. But I did have my guys fitted. The vests are sitting at home, waiting for an okay to purchase. I do, you know, stress the importance of these vests for my guys, because they have, to have these vests to work efficiently and safely. I also want to say that you see the figures before you, I bet it's minimal compared to what could happen with life or death situation for the guys handling it in my office. I have checked around, this is the state cost. This is, what is it now?
Government.
No, no, what is it?
Oh, the government.
Yeah, the government parts, this is the discount they give law enforcement, in other words. I guess it's COVID.
It comes from, I don't know, I can't think of the... Right, but it's from this state. They have a government website, and that's what he's talking about. And this is for how many?
This is for fourteen.
Is that how many deputy's you have?
Yes, ma'am.
Are these worn, uh, daily by all the deputies or this for their own special assignment on office?
No, sir. These, these are worn daily by all working law enforcement, all my deputies wearing them.
You're the ones that work at, uh, General.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, sorry. Forgive me. These are, it's, it's in Gates County policy and season, but they wear these. I went back and tweaked the entire, thanks Melissa for your help, but I went back and tweaked my, from front to back, my policy. And one of my policies is that you wear your vest, and also is part of the insurance that we pay or you pay for these guys who work in vests. Amigos, I'm sorry.
There's seven, point nine, all these.
Uh, I don't, I didn't bring it with me, because I forgot about the other stuff, but twice before you, the totals on the back, you know, what happened was, they also, I had a couple of guys that are real heavy into, well, not real heavy, but working special assignment, things that I needed to work for them. For the comfort, they are, they give them the carry, external carry, where they can attach flashlights, magazine carriers, and other things that are outside that they choose to with these vests. I know you probably don't have the answer to this. I'm trying.
I say you probably don't have the answer to this right off, but at this cost, if there ain't protected of recycling, you know, we've got, the shelf life is gone, if there any recyclable, uh, possibility, disease, I can check, you probably don't have the answer right now.
Commissioner Jordan, the only thing I can tell you is we can practice, we can use it for practice, that's all. Nobody wants anything outside, and...
I mean, you know, they'll take a recyclist care.
No, they won't, they, they don't take these back, because they're worn daily, and they're, they're sweat, everything else, but they won't, they don't take them back and give us some money for them, no sir.
Are they, I of course I know that because of the different sizes of, so you have, are these fitted?
They are fitted to the person, not, not, there's not one size, small, medium, large, S, large. They are fitted to the person. So I had Greg come in from your company before you, and Greg fit even to, Mr. Commissioner Felton, everybody was fitted for vests from body size. Being the ones that were not here, we trained, I took them to law enforcement to have them fitted for the vests. There was three deputies that weren't here at the time that Greg was here.
And I mean, I know that we have a turnover of duties that sometimes...
Yes, ma'am.
So the person that's fitted for leaves, the vest stays for months?
Yes, ma'am, but if you can recall, Deputy Domeno left our office and pursued a career other way, other place, and he called back requesting his vest. So we, you voted that we sold the vests to him or to the agency that he went to, so he's still using that vest. He was one of the newest guys with these vests of purchase, so his vest was not outdated. So we sold it to him. So if they do leave, you have that option to sell it if they want.
And it could be the person would be similarly size.
I'm hoping that that won't happen, but anything's possible, sorry.
Okay, what is the pleasure for? Certainly, we want to keep our law enforcement as safe as possible.
Certainly in the interest of good law enforcement, safety, and procedures thereof, I would not like to make that motion.
And I just been made?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion's been seconded, in discussion. Okay, opposite, the boss money will do about your hands. All those, if they raise their right hand. All those opposed, passes. Now it's hard for us to cut your money.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, so, Cam. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If somebody commented on that statement, you just made a request that come from, from ballot.
Okay.
Yes, it's in the document.
Okay, I'll come out and come out.
Let me, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, let me know when you guys decide that I can have them here. They're sitting waiting on the approval from the county commissioner.
We have to do the budget amendment.
Yes, ma'am, but whenever it's done, just let me know we can get them here.
I can do it. We'll just meet over, I can show, it's all time delay.
Okay, we have, of course, now the ongoing discussion of the First Judicial District. I'll turn over to County Manager, explained by Corhice.
As you may recall, before my tenure, the decision was made by Pasquotane County to, in the DA's office, to house everyone who worked in for the DA's office in Pasquotane at their justice or their safety center. After that time, then Pasquotane decided that they would then invoice each of the counties in that judicial district for housing the DA's office. Prior to my arrival, the Commissioners voted that they would not pay that amount of money, and each year since then, I have been approached by County Manager from Pasquotane about paying this. At this point in time, Chawan, Currituck, and Gates County does not contribute to the cost of the Pasquotane DA's office. And this letter that is for you, the first one in your packet, is to Mr. Wong, Rodney Bunch, who's County Manager of Pasquotane, stating that as of July first, two thousand seventeen, that they would not be able to provide all of the space that they have been providing, because Currituck, Gates, and Chawan County will not pay their portion. And the next letter is a response from Pamela Fett, who is with the North Carolina Administrative Office of the Court, outlining what each county is responsible for providing to the DA, to the public defenders, and other personnel. Commissioner Hoffler and I were at a meeting, probably been about a year ago, where this was brought up and very quickly discussed, since it was at the end of our meeting time. And at that time, the three counties said, no, they would not pay. And if you remember during budget discussion, we discussed it, and you said, no, you would not pay. Since receiving this letter, I've reached out to Kevin Howard, who's County Manager in Chawan County, and Dan Scanlon, Currituck County Manager. Chawan County was going to discuss this issue today. Currituck had a order retreat the other week, and they said that Currituck's position remains unchanged, and they are not anticipating that they will fund, budget funds to pay Pasquotane County. He said, Dan Scanlon said, the talking points for Currituck are, we have available space, that we are already incurred costs, maintain our statutory responsibility. To contribute to Pasquotane County would be doubling our mandated responsibility. Facilities fees do not come close to covering our incurred costs. There is a potential economic development, and sales tax benefit Pasquotane County to host the regional office. People might frequent Pasquotane County businesses, purchase gas shop, or eat before or after visiting the office, which would create sales tax. Previously, we were advised that no other regional arrangement such as this requires not host counties to pay the host county, and their county is not asked to co-share, because they have already provided space. So why are other counties that also provide space being asked to co-share?
Looks like we've got DA offices over there.
You mean like...
It says DA offices here.
And they're on here how many days, a month?
Several days, Madam Chairman, not just the court days, and maybe the sheriffs can have that for too, but there's also several court going, and then, then the traffic court, is that right, Sheriff?
Yes, it is.
Sheriff, I want to, is there, is there computer access, I believe there's computer access.
They have full access to everything we have here. They have internet services, they have a computer, they have a telephone, they have everything they need, including the law, the law lab.
There's the law lab.
My question, of course, was who, I had never heard of that we had to provide computers. And I said, of course, who determines what's adequate? Because I know what we determine adequate, the DA's office might not deem adequate.
I'm sure they have laptops.
Yeah.
Because of the place it was.
They're state issued, now, those they need. They're state issued.
Okay.
Their computers or laptops was a state issue.
And I'm sure that they, yeah, they have their computers.
We provide, when they're here, we provide. I have a wireless internet connection just outside of the courtroom, that they have access to what they need. We have it also hardwired, just below your feet, Commissioner Felton, where they can use as well, they can hardwire, but they have access to everything they need, including telephone services as well.
What is the pleasure for, I don't know what my pleasure is.
Madam Chairman, I would, I would make a motion that we have County Manager respond to Pasquotane County, County Manager Rodney Bunch, and also to Pamela West, the North Carolina Administrative Office of the Court, and that they know that Gates County has and has continues to provide adequate space for the DA office, and that we do not wish to contribute to a central location for the DA.
Motion's been made, a second.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made, a second.
And in addition, I don't know, County Manager, you like to, to include this, and if Commissioner Jordan would, would also, and that is that these offices are not used by anyone else in their absence, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that door should be locked. If it's not, then it's...
So it's exclusive, or exclusive.
Okay, motion has been made, a second, any additional comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Madam Chairman, may I ask what the vote was?
Five to zero.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we have two little items. The Quimis showing is Gates Board, I mean, what is it, PCG Recycling needs a motion to reappoint two Commissioners to their board, and currently, Commissioner Felton is now serving in that capacity.
Doing a wonderful job.
I'll make that motion, that second.
Motion has been made, a second, in a discussion? Motion is been made and seconded, in a discussion?
Thank you, Jack, for your compliment. You're welcome, sir. You're welcome, Sheriff.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Well, that's how I think it's five to zero, too. We also have to, Ms. Polly, would you like to address this?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, yes, good morning.
I know. So you've only got, we've got the items here.
Yes, I would like to have Chair, Commissioner Owens, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Felton, Commissioner Freeman, County Manager, Rattrick, and also to the clerk, and also Lieutenant Green, good morning to our new finance officer. This is a request on behalf of, on behalf of our Gates County Community Child Protection Team to have the appointment of the new sheriff. I attended a community child protection team training in Chawan on January the twentieth, and I asked a question. I said, well, when we got to the appointment discussion, I said, well, we have a new sheriff, our former sheriff retired last year. And the presenter said, well, on that note, you need to ask the Board of Commissioners to appoint the new sheriff. And this is in line with the General Statute seven B dash fourteen oh seven regarding local teams' composition, and it says that each local team shall consist of representatives of public and non-public agencies in the community that provide services to children and their families and other individuals who represent the community. And there's seven B fourteen oh seven. Two says a local law enforcement officer appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. So that is why I'm there for you today.
Okay, so you would like us to appoint Sheriff Randy Hathaway to the Gates County Community Child Public Team?
Yes.
Do you want your motion to that?
Sub move by the chairman?
Motion's been made?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion?
Would, would that also include his destiny or the sheriff's?
Yes, well, the destiny, which has been kept, Tim Blinder Parker has always been attending in the absence of the former sheriff.
And she's still...
And she's still attends.
So would that be...
Should we include that, the sheriff's Hathaway and/or, and/or his destiny?
Yes, that will be fine.
Could you mention Felton?
Yeah.
Okay. Who made that motion?
Free.
This one.
Okay, and the second was by Commissioner Felton, correct? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Gotcha. You got to do a noble job to take change. Okay, services comments? None? Commissioners comments? I tell you what, we'll start with Commissioner Owens and go that way and then come back.
All right. Good to see everybody here today. Got a lot accomplished and welcome. One of our new county employees. Glad to have you on board and look forward to giving value. Like, thank you, everybody, for their participation today, and go Patriots.
Yes, I too, glad to see everyone here today, a part of me. Glad to see some of our constituents, especially in my district, as always. Really, I got to remind you that all...
And what you can.
And we welcome our new finance officer, and we look forward to working with you. Have a great day.
And Henry, I believe, are you finance also, might be from my business. We also have a good friend, Ray, here. Just glad to have all of you here today and just glad to see everybody here interested and to ready to participate and to learn what goes on and how it's done, and I just appreciate all the participation from everybody around the country.
I too, along with my colleagues, certainly appreciate the input from all of our citizens, but here today is those that we hear from. We enjoy the outside perspective of the information that you bring to us and through our county manager and certainly through our chairman to the board itself. It does motivate us, and we appreciate your engagement with the board. Thank you.
I too, thank you for coming today. Pay attention to the niceness, because this is not a regular meeting day. This month, we changed it from the first Wednesday to the first Monday, but next month, we'll be back to the first Wednesday of that because they had, there was a conflict. Thank you, we accomplished a lot today, certainly moving in the right direction, some issues that have been lingering for a while. Hopefully, we've got schools going, hopefully, we've got something going with the Court Heights, and of course, now we have the fun, the fun job of dealing with next year's budget that will be coming up soon. But listen, we thank you for your attendance, we appreciate your comments and your concerns, and each of us, all, everybody in this room wants the best for the county. Okay, this time, we will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three, dash three one eight, eleven, illegal economic development personnel.
A move? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we'll take a short break. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Sub move?
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So we're going to reset to go into a budget session? Okay, did I hear a motion to adjourn our regular board commissioners meeting?
Sub move? Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.